This meeting of Monroe Township Board of Education is called to order. I'd like to ask everyone to please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Gorski, can we have a roll call?
Mrs. Arminio. Mr. Braverman.
Mrs. DeMeo.
Here.
Mr. Kaufman.
Here.
Mrs. Koloponowicz. Mr. Nostine.
Here.
Mrs. Carino.
Here.
Mr. Ryback.
Here.
Mr. Russo.
Here.
And Mr. Rutzke.
Here.
Board President, you have a quorum present this evening. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted July 22, 2016, at all schools, The Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the municipality.
Thank you. Right now, we have approval of minutes and like a motion to approve the minutes of public Board of Education meeting, April 27, 2016.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries there. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session meeting, April 27, 2016.
So moved.
Second? Thank you, Mr. Russo. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Okay. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the public Board of Education meeting, May 11, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Passes. And I need approval for the minutes of closed session meeting, May 11, 2016.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, no.
One no?
One no.
Any abstention? No. Okay. We're up to committee reports. Any committee chair? Mr. Kaufman.
Sure, we had a curriculum committee meeting this evening. We had only two agenda items. One agenda item was to approve the new physics program, which went forward unanimously. The other item was something that's on our agenda to review, the impact study and ad hoc recommendations. So, well, I'll defer to you guys when you do the presentation. That's it.
Any other committee chair? Mr. Nostine.
Thank you, Mr. Board President. The Finance Committee met last evening, and the first item on the agenda was the review of the Adult Education Program. I had requested a review of this going forward. It hadn't been looked at, the books, much, and it ended up that the, when all is calculated in, the loss to the Adult Education Program is roughly $53,000. The committee suggested that we look further into this, and they weren't too excited about the loss, but we realized it is an asset, in some respects, to the community to offer this program. So, we're going to look at further details, such as attendance, et cetera, and see what might be, going forward, a better way to address this. Secondly, we had a discussion on the 1617 lease purchasing and financing. That's on 31, page 31 of your agenda are the items that we're going to be going out for lease slash purchasing, and the rates are very favorable now, so the Finance Committee agreed that that would be a good way to proceed. Third up on the agenda last evening was the Student Enrollment Growth and Facilities Plan update that they presented to the Finance Committee, and I'm also a member of the BG&amp;T Committee, and the chairman of that committee is not here this evening, but we also had that presented at the BG&amp;T meeting also. That is going to be an in-depth presentation this evening, so the public will be aware of that presentation. The committee last evening approved or suggested that it be presented to the full board with the committee's approval to go with an engineering study of the land that is being possibly deeded to the township for the planned increase to build two new schools. And that concludes my report, Mr. Board President.
Thank you, Mr. Nostine. Any question for Mr. Nostine? Mrs. Arminio?
Yes, Board President, there's something on the agenda regarding the adult program, the adult disabilities program, is that, you were talking about the regular adult education program?
May I ask that, Mr. Board President?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so, what's on here regarding the adult?
No, there's nothing on our agenda this evening for that.
Okay.
The thing that's, the item that's on our agenda this evening is on page 31 pertains to the lease financing purchases that we're going to be going through.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Mrs. Arminio, anything that you want to report? Okay, any other committee chair?
Did I want to report?
Yes.
Did you say, oh, for, yes, for policy. We had an extensive policy meeting, if you'll turn to your page 22 and 23, those are all the policies this evening for the first reading. Most of them were mandated changes, some of them were very limited changes from mandated for, so we reviewed them, but therefore, first reading this evening, which means that between now and the next meeting, if anyone has any concerns or changes or recommendations, they could email either Dr. Kozak or myself as a chair, and we would review them for the next. So, they're presented tonight, they are for review for the board and the public, and then on the second reading, they will be put into practice for the board. And if people were tuned in to last month's meeting, we had an extensive and rather, I guess, interesting discussion about copy machines and the PTAs and PTOs. And by the way, I'd like to compliment, the committee meetings are open to the public, the board committee meetings are open to the public, and I would like to extend gratitude to the PTA and PTO members who came to that meeting, and we talked about the copy machines, and the result essentially is that the copy machines will be available to PTAs and PTOs within the schools. We are still giving the principals, you know, the autonomy to work that out with each individual group, but we are pleased and grateful, and you'll see in the agenda tonight that one of the PTOs and PTAs donated nearly $7,000 to one of the schools. So, we're very grateful for their participation and all that they do to the schools, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any question for Mrs. Arminio? Any other committee chair? Okay. In that case, we're up to the presentation. I plan to address the impact of student enrollment growth in the facilities of the school district, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Kozak, Mr. Gorski, Dr. Alvek, and Mr. Tagg, I believe, will be involved.
Okay, good evening. Board members, members of the public. Tonight is a, we're going to present the plan that we have to recommend to the Board of Education to address our growing student enrollment, or our student enrollment growth. I have Dr. Alvek with me, our Assistant Superintendent, and Mr. Gorski, our Business Administrator, Board Secretary, and Mr. Tagg is in the audience as well, should we need his assistance, he's our Director of Facilities. The plan to address student enrollment growth, this is really the culmination of work that began about a year ago, in looking at the housing going up, getting demographer reports, and looking at our registration, our student registration, as it was growing and growing. We formed a steering committee, small committee from the board and a couple administrators, to plan how we're going to go about doing this, and from that point, we had the, an ad hoc which developed into a Student Growth Advisory Committee, which started out with maybe about 80 members of the community. We had representatives from our school, teachers, administrators, board members, students, our police department, rec department, our senior communities, parents, teachers, number of people. And although we didn't maintain everybody till the end, we had what I think were very valuable discussions during that time, and we looked at all different possibilities, including school configurations, ways to address both short-term and long-term needs of the school district as our student population continued to grow. So, what I'm about to present to you tonight is the result of, after taking the input from this Student Growth Advisory Committee, listening to community members, residents, going out to the senior community, and taking information from the demographer report and other reports, and from the very beginning, we stated that the ultimate decision is the Board of Education. It's their decision on what they decide to do, and the Board of Education tasked myself and the administrative team with coming up with a plan to address the student enrollment The key tenets of the plan are as indicated. Not, I won't read this word for word, but I'll just give you an overview. So, the first part is in addition to the high school, to this high school right here. Currently, we are over capacity from the amount of students that this school is built for, and we're looking, based on our demographer reports and based on all the other information, we're looking to hit a, the top number of around 3,000 students that we're expecting in this high school. And we're expecting that anywhere between five to 10 years, maybe even 15 years. So, our recommendation is to build an addition to this high school that's very similar to what South Brunswick has done, and we went out and visited South Brunswick High School just to see what it would look like, and we also learned from visiting South Brunswick some of the things that worked for them and some of the things that didn't work for them. For instance, some of the hallways weren't wide enough. They had a bridge going across from the addition to the main building that they decided, once they opened the building, they found it was just a little too crowded. So, we learned from some of their, I don't want to say mistakes, but some things that they had to do over again that they would do differently. I also consulted with superintendents and other people from other districts, including East Brunswick, North Brunswick, and to see what they, how they have handled their enrollment growth, because those districts have gone through this enrollment growth probably in the past 10 years or more, and all of those high schools are around 3,000 students, somewhere in that vicinity. So, we talked to them about what they did with their buildings, what they did with their elementary, their middle school, their high school, and looking at that, that's the one area that we would need, is an addition to this high school. The addition would be on what's, I guess, could be considered a footprint that was designed when this school was built, and there was room left or designated that could be used for an addition should the need arise. Well, the need arose. Okay, we're here. So, that's the first part. The second part I have in here is to repurpose Applegarth School, and that's not something that would happen right away, but we've heard a lot of concern about the age of Applegarth School. I believe it's 1932 that it was built, and the infrastructure, the pipes leading into the building, the boiler, we can't get parts for the boiler anymore. We have another school, Barclay Brook, that's pretty much as old, but that had received renovations in prior years. Applegarth School wouldn't be any, would not incur any cost to the district right away, but what it would do, if we repurposed that school to house administrative offices at this point, it would save us $70,000 a month that we pay in lease fees for our special aid administrators and other people, that there's just no room anywhere else to house these people. So, that building and that $70,000 a month that we're paying, that we could save, and think of the annual value of that. The bottom part is to build a new elementary school and a new middle school. And that would be on land that the township has promised to us to transfer over to us that, I'm told, it's, I believe it's 65 acres, and I'm told it could be in the value of somewhere between $7 to $10 million. That's a huge savings. I know that North Brunswick is looking for land right now, and they're looking to pay, you know, millions of dollars for land, so that would be a huge savings for us. The rationale that I provided here on the screen is two direct quotes from our demographer, Ross Haber, and he talks about basically the need to address the student enrollment growth, and also that, based on his study, the bulk of the new housing will occur within the next five years. So, it's in our best interest to act now to start to prepare for that, and that the rate of growth will slow somewhat, but it'll continue going up to 10 years, and maybe even towards 15. Anything beyond 15 years is extremely hard to predict. We'll have a new governor, we'll have a new president, the economy, there's housing, there's so many different issues that we would have to contend with. But, we feel that the plan that we're presenting to the Board of Education tonight will address the educational needs of our students for the next 10 to 15 years, and we believe it'll be done in a fiscally responsible manner.
Dr. Kozak, just as a point of clarification, because I didn't want everyone from the public to get nervous, the rental that we're paying for the special services is $70,000 annually. I know you had mentioned $70,000 a month.
Oh, my apologies. I did. I, I, thank you for that correction.
I saw some people turning a little pale there. I wanted to clarify.
Yes, $70,000 a year, my mistake. I wasn't, I was thinking of something else, my apologies for that. Thank you, Mr. Ryback, for clarifying that. The pictures I have, the next three or four slides are pictures of the construction that's going on right now. Every day, I drive by different areas that the construction has started, so it's beyond the question of, will this be built, to, it's being built. So, the first picture, the first two slides, I believe, are from the housing development being planned over by, sorry, what's the road?
33.
That's 33? I thought the other picture, I thought this was by Regency.
33.
Okay, this is 30, by 33, Route 33 in Applegarth. That's one picture of it. These are all then, from 33 and Applegarth, I believe. Okay. But you can see that they're building out there, luxury townhomes are being planned, and a number of units are being planned in that area. I don't have a picture, but there is another area where they have also started, and that is on, and I continue to forget the name of that road.
Several.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
There's several.
Yes, yeah, yeah, there's several. And there are other developments that are planned, some approved, some still need to go to the planning committee, but we looked at those projections, and we tried to take the numbers that we felt were appropriate, that we could expect. This satellite picture is a picture of the land that the township has promised to us, and the lime green kind of color outlines the 65 acres. Now, tonight, there's a resolution to ask the board to approve us to hire a, an environmental engineer to check the land out to make sure that it's usable, to make sure there are no We've been out to visit the land, some of our board members have gone out, some of us have walked on the land, or at least walked around it, and it seems to be usable, but we really need the opinions of an expert to tell us, to make sure that there's nothing that we don't know about. I have another satellite view, and for this, well, actually, before I get to that, I'll talk about this. This is just a chart outlining the elementary, middle, and the addition to the high school, a five-year projection, meaning this is what, this will meet our needs in five years, and then the 10 years, the, you know, non-applicable, or the non-applicable NA on there, is that we wouldn't need to do anything for 10 years, really 15, that we can see, based on the information we have. So, we realize that this is a lot of building, and it's certainly not a position that I want to be in, or any of us, but it's a reality. So, we have to deal with this. The alternative we have is leasing trailers, and, you know, the district has gone through that at the cost of many millions of dollars, and, you know, we would like to avoid that if we can, because you don't get anything for the lease. The next slide, I'm going to hand the mic over, but I want to go up, and I'm going to manipulate the slide a little bit to show you. It's another satellite view, but I just can zoom in a little bit by working on the screen, so I'm going to go over to the laptop. I need a cordless mic. So, this picture, I zoomed in a little bit. This is just a satellite view, it's a more recent view of the same land that I just showed you, and this is off of Old Church Road, which runs off of Applegarth, and there's land back there, which is 65 acres, as I was saying, and, you know, I don't know how well you can see it, but there is one spot that looks like a dark, it seems to be mostly part of a rectangle, and we believe that to be drainage, man-made, you know, swale or whatever, that was built maybe when this was farmland, but that's something the environmental engineer will certainly check out for us, to make sure that there are no environmental concerns, anything that would prevent us from building on this land. And I have, the next slide I'm going to show you is what it could look like with an elementary and a middle school on the land. It's another township, it's another township that went through an enrollment growth probably 10 years ago, and they took a very similar approach. They took a plot of land, and they built a middle school and an elementary. So, I just want to clarify this, this is, what I'm going to show you is not, oh, thank you, Dr. Alvek, if you can just go to the slide at the top, and the, you'll see, it's not, it's not going to look exactly like it, but just to give you the idea of what it would look like to have two schools on a plot of land, to share the fields, and the other. Dr. Alvek, if you go to the, back to the presentation, it's the gold square at the top, there you go, and just click on that, no, no, click right on the link, just. Okay, and if you just, on the screen, if you just squeeze it, the screen itself, it's a touchscreen, and you can pull it in. So, this is a middle school and an elementary school in another township, and you can see that it would be a similar type of, not exactly, but it would be similar, this is what it, something could look like. Also to note are the roads nearby, they're two-lane highways, so one of the things that we were concerned about, what would the congestion be like with traffic, what would, you know, the roads be like? Well, with an elementary and a middle school on that road, on that plot of land, the times, the starting and dismissal times are different, so it would be staggered, and this middle school and high, or elementary school also work on that staggered schedule, so it seems to operate very well in that area. And with this school, there's even a neighborhood right across the street, and it's manageable. Could you go back to the presentation, please? Thank you. So, the next steps, and by the time, we're at the bottom part of the slide now. This presentation was presented to our Buildings and Grounds Committee. They recommended that we move forward with this plan and send it to the Finance Committee, so we met with the Finance Committee of the board. Finance Committee listened to the presentation, discussed several things, and they recommended that it go to the Curriculum Committee, which we did tonight, and now finally, we are here to, with the Board of Ed and the public, presenting the plan. Okay. There will be a public comment, so there'll be room for questions from the public about this, but, Mr. President, would it open up to the board members at this time, unless you direct otherwise?
Well, I have a resolution I'd like to read, but if they have questions, what I'd like to do is read the resolution and have discussion by the board, and then what I'd like to do is, before the board votes, open it up to the public for discussion just on this plan.
Okay.
So, that being said, I'd like to read the following resolution. It is, it is recommended that the Board of Education, one, direct district administration to proceed with referendum planning regarding the building of a new elementary school and new middle school on the land, which will be transferred by the township to the board and in addition, and an addition to the high school. And two, authorize district administration to solicit proposals for the proposed referendum project from professionals, including the board's architect, bond counselor, and financial advisor, for further deliberations and recommendations by the Building and Grounds Transportation Committee and the Finance Committee, and ultimately, for deliberation and consideration by the full board. The Board President, the Superintendent of Schools, and the Business Administrator/Board Secretary are hereby authorized and directed to take all necessary steps to implement this action of the Board of Education.
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Okay. I'd open it up for discussion from the board first, and then the public. Any discussion from board members?
I just have a question.
Mr. Russo.
On the diagram, the
Talking to the mic.
Yeah, on the, on the map, there's a lot of vacant land surrounding the proposed land that we are going to be given. Do we know anything about that land? Who owns it? What will be built there? Any future plans?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
There were two satellite views, as, you know, we talked about the other night. One was from an earlier satellite view, and you didn't see any houses across the road, and the second one was a more recent, and you could see houses there. There's a road that runs along the side of the land that takes you to a development that's already completed, but it winds way back in there, and there's a cul-de-sac, Mr. Ryback, and we drove through there. I'm not, I'm picturing it now, I'm not real sure of that the land on either side of it from that point. And, Mr. Tagg, I'm not sure if you have any information on that, that you could share with us?
I believe those are told, where the developments that are being completed now wrap around the success of the main piece.
So, around those dark lines, there'll be homes built?
There are homes built there now, they're finishing that project.
Let me just say, I think, Mr. Russo, the dark lines, sort of like a rectangle, or maybe a trapezoid, those may be used for educational purposes on the land. On the other side of the road, going into the road, and that's where, it's a cul-de-sac, and that's where there are homes. It's not on that land.
No, I'm not, so, the construction site is going to be within those black lines? That's what I understood?
No. No, that's
Beyond.
The dark lines that were, the trapezoid, as Mr. Ryback said, or the, you know, it's kind of a rectangle there, that's on the land that's being provided to us. So, we're looking at that as, we think that was just drainage.
Okay, but how much of that lot, is it, is it the whole lot that?
Yeah, the original shot that I showed you with, there was like a lime green that went around it, that's the entire area. The rectangular lines in the middle of that is just one section of it, but we would own all, we would have all the land.
Mrs. Arminio?
Board President, if I may, if my memory is correct, and I understand, I was at either a planning board or zoning board meeting when that land was suggested was going to be transferred to the township based on approvals, so the surrounding land, to answer Mr. Russo's question, will be built upon. That land that is sectioned out, that 65 acres, was part of an approval process for, I believe, like a cluster zoning provision, which means the builders were allowed to put more density on the land with the provision of segregating out that parcel. Now, it was, it's generally, when you have that kind of provision, it's generally to remain as open space, but I believe that the municipality is going to accept it as land for municipal use, but it's based on a valuable consideration given to the builder, so the builder will probably be building all around that land a development. And to, my question would be, that has not been deeded over to the township yet, is that correct? That land?
I think that's correct.
So, do we have a timeframe as to when that might happen?
Absolutely.
I know, you know, I understand the process, that there's, there's a process I know, you know, I understand the process, that, that there's, there's a process for deeding it over, but do we have any timeframe?
One of the suggestions that came out of Finance Committee was to get a letter of intent from the township to transfer the land, or show intent to transfer the land to the school district, and we'll talk more about that later. Included in that letter of intent from the township is going to be a timeline
Okay.
And more details on, on how the transfer is going to materialize.
Okay. Because my next question was, do we have anything in writing? So, we can proceed at this point without?
Yes. Some drafts are going to go back and forth between our, our council and the attorney, attorneys for the township on that letter, but I expect we will probably have that in hand within a matter of a week or two.
Okay.
And as soon as we have it, all the Board members will have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mynheal, any, any other question?
Not, not at this time.
Mr. Nostine, then.
Yes, thank you. I just am a little confused because I was under the impression, based on the Finance Committee and the BGNT, that we were just going to be authorizing the Board, or, yeah, to the administration, to spend $13,000 on the Edwards Engineering Study to see if the feasibility of this transferred land will meet our requirements. I'm a little concerned with directing them to proceed with a referendum planning, because if this Edwards study comes through and we don't have the land, it seems like we're, we're kind of fighting against each other with this resolution.
Number one, the, the resolution offers a framework for the concept idea for administration then to proceed with a lot more work in its development. The initial step of that, of course, is the Edwards Engineering Recommendation that's on the professional appointment recommendation list tonight, because that will determine if the plan that's been developed so far by administration is feasible, if that land can sustain two school buildings on its property, and if there's any other issues that we should be aware of that could hinder that plan. But, again, the reso identifies the fact and that through this process that Dr. Kozak delineated before, that we have currently 1,000 unhoused students in the district. We have 1,550 students projected over the next five years that will leave 2,550 students unhoused. And over the next 10 years, it grows from there. I don't have the, you could add another 1,000 on top of that. So, it, it is imperative at this juncture because a lot of time has passed with the secession of superintendents and the interim process and the ad hoc process to now engage in actual pre-referendum planning. And that's what this resolution was intended to do, to provide some framework for administration to collaborate with the Board and other professionals to refine this plan to something more functional and clear. Now, the hazard, if we don't have a resolution, is that we will be having brainstorming sessions with different parties all over, and it will lead to inefficiency in the process. This was the culmination of the ad hoc committee's work and administration using that data to put together a plan in order to house all of those students for the next five or 10 years. We believe that this does so as efficiently as possible, and this is the Board's memorialization of that in this referendum process.
Mr. Nostine?
Yeah, and I totally understand that, and I'm totally on board with that, but I, I'm a little concerned that there is no dollar amount on this reso. The proposal that we were looking at from Edwards was clearly delineated as being $13,000. And I would like somewhere to maybe see that, how much are we spending on this resolution right here?
I beg your pardon, I misunderstood. The only professional resolution that is before you today is for the engineer to do a feasibility study on the land. The, we, we will begin to work with the other professionals here, financial advisor, architect, bond counselor, soon, and we will be soliciting proposals from them as a directive from this resolution. Those proposals will certainly be brought back to the Board of Education for authorization at a future meeting as early as August.
That totally clears it up for me. Thank you, Mr. Gorski.
Thank you, Mr. Nostine.
Nostine, yes, Mr. Mynheal.
Thank you, Mr. Gorski. I was too going to ask on number two, authorize direct administration, and direct, I'm sorry, authorize district administration to solicit proposals for referendum. So, on Mr. Nostine's question, the solicitation for proposals does not really cost us anything, right? They'll be essentially submitting either a description of what their services might be and the cost if we choose to go forward?
Yes, ma'am.
So, if any of those professionals, if we deem them, have we decided on the professionals? If we deem them not who we want to go with, we can, we can ask for proposals from other people as well?
Absolutely. That's 100% the Board's authority.
Okay. So, it's really just a proposal for, just information at this point?
Yes. The only thing that's on for tonight is a recommendation for professional services for the engineer, Edwards Engineering, $13,000 to determine if this land can sustain two buildings and if there's any issues that we should be aware of with the study.
I've read, I've read that.
Is that the first step here, or you're putting the, the cart ahead of the horse? And then, second, we are going to work soliciting proposals from other professionals who will serve the Board in future processes of this referendum. And that will, that will only go through Board resolution as the Edwards Engineering is on for tonight.
I read that letter. I'll have questions about that later.
Mr. Mayo, you had a?
Yeah. I have questions about the proposal from Edwards. Can I ask that now? It talks about researching the New Jersey DEP and federal databases for soil information, and it says it will not include testing, soil testing. At what point does soil testing coming to play for this process?
Mr. President, I asked Mr. Tagg to give us some expertise on that, but I could tell you from past referendum, the Department of Education has always requested soil samples to make sure there's no contamination for any facility that's, that students are going to be housed.
Direction on that will come from the Phase 1 study that Edwards does. So, if during their research, they determine that testing of a specific nature needs to be done, they will come back to us and they will help us engage an environmental engineer. Edwards Engineering is a civil design firm. They are not an environmental firm. So, if there is soil testing to be done there, they would help us solicit proposals from testing labs to have that testing done. Give you a broad example. If the research through the database indicates that there were apple orchards there at one time, apple orchards historically have used chemicals that caused problems with soil. If that is evident, then they would recommend testing in that regard. There is other types of soil testing that will take place down the road, and that is where you dig test pits and you determine groundwater level, determine the structural stability of the soil. And that is necessary to determine, for example, if you need to import, you know, thousands and thousands of tons of soil, if the quality of the soil is not there structurally. It can also affect the design, whether you would have to put pilings in rather than standard footings. Those kind of things affect the cost. So, those are the, the testing that will happen. You will likely, during this process with Edwards, will get feedback at some point, maybe midway through, where they'll come back and say, we recommend that you start testing for these parameters.
Now, would Toll Brothers, for all the areas they develop, have done soil testing for the other areas?
Their testing requirements are not as stringent as those for the Department of Education. So, we have, the New Jersey Department of Education has a regulatory checklist that we have to go through in the land acquisition process
Okay.
Which is very different from a homeowner building a residential building.
Okay. Thank you.
If I might, I, I just want to add, that's one reason why we really need to consider the time factor, because it does take a lot longer for us to build a school than a developer to build, build a development. We're, we're under a lot more requirements. And I think the key thing to remember here is, is the proceed with a referendum, planning. I think the word "planning" really says it all because that we can change from one specialist area to, to another one. And that's the key word for everybody to remember here. Any other Board members? Mr. Russo?
One more question. If Mr. T can answer, in connection with the road, if he sees any problems with the two-lane road near the school.
Certainly welcome Mr. Tagg's expertise on this topic too, but I will tell you that as it exists now on the map, those roads would not be suitable for housing two schools in accordance with our plan. We have spoke with township officials who plan on widening the roads to make the roads suitable for traffic for two schools and whatever else exists in that area. We're fortunate in that that's not a, an area where traffic flows through. It's kind of a niche in the corner, and it's not a thoroughfare, I believe is the word. So, there is not a lot of traffic on there like that exists at many of our other schools. And the township is, is going to address the road widening.
That would also be in writing, I guess.
This whole process will be done professionally and, and managed that way, yes.
Then, just one more question, just in the immediate area, is there any commercial developments that are going to be built in that immediate area?
Not to my knowledge.
Any other Board member have a question or comment? I'll now open it up to any member of the public to address just the development issue. Let me just say, when you come to the microphone, please state your name, your address, and you'll be limited to three minutes. Three.
Mark Klein, Seven Crenshaw. I do have a lot to say, and I guess most of it'll have to be in the second public portion. I want to compliment you on what all of you've done in preparing for the future. What you mentioned about Gateway, the other development is called Chad Properties. The new catchphrase in New Jersey is overlay zone. And what an overlay zone is, is a combination of residential and commercial. So, you're going to notice in many towns now, they're building commercial on the bottom and they're putting apartments above like they did in Pear Village. Okay? So, that's that part. As far as COA, now, this is something that's very, very important. No, I'm going to change this. Last Planning Board meeting, there was a rewriting of the master plan for properties on Route 33, probably between Prorionville and Applegarth in that area. And the reason why they did it, basically, it's the same developer who's going to build two very large communities, townhouses and apartments for families. Evidently, he owns property on the other side of 33, and it's been rezoned now for about 1,000 residential units. What happened with COA is, and Michelle can probably help me with this, COA no longer exists. That's the Committee on Affordable Housing. Because for about eight years, they did not really do what the government expected them to do. It's now handled by a judge. And our obligation originally was 2,300 units, of which only 20% have to be affordable. So, with 2,300 units, you'd have to build 8,000 units. The way it's being done now, the way it's being broken down, and I'm not, I'm giving you what my understanding is, only a small portion can be over 65. A small portion could be seniors.
About one minute, Mr. Klein. Good. Continue.
I lost, I got to start over again. And then, they have a part that's going to be truly affordable, and then they're going to have one that's very, very affordable, and that's going to be about 100 units. And when they say very, very, and that's what I'm trying to get clarification of, does that mean Section 8 housing? There should never have been a COA. They, what they're doing is totally wrong. We're being overpopulated, overbuilt, in too quick of a time, and I got 10 seconds left?
Yes.
So, you got to count that in with that. Now, this is another 1,000 units that could be there. It could be five years, 10 years, 15 years. What helped us with this, and just bear with me, instead of 2,300 units, by going along with what the judge wants, it cuts our obligation down to 1,100 units, which means roughly 4,000 units would have to be built. So, that's something you should get clarified. My suggestion is, I know the township helped us in the past with land. I'm asking the powers-to-be to meet with, I don't know whether it's John Riggs or, or Mayor Tamboro, and, and let's all work together. I know they want to work with us. They know what we're in, the problem that we have.
Just for the sake of time, let me say that.
I'm done.
We, thank you. We, we are, we have open discussions and a very positive relationship with our elected officials, and we look forward to working with them to benefit of, of the town and for our purposes, the school system in general.
Okay. Now, for later, if it is later, talking about Christie's plan for more aid for our town, can that be handled in this session, which I hope I can? I had surgery today.
Now, you have to wait for the second public session. I'm sorry.
If I pass out, call Robert Wood Johnson.
We'll take you. Anybody else from the public? Yes, sir.
My name is Ambika Sukla, and I live on to Shear Court, which is not that far from where you're planning to build a school. So, I'm somewhat familiar with the, the land. My concerns are the following. I'm just trying to understand which other parcels of land was considered, because I find this particular choice very odd, considering on the south side of it, it's all swamps, preserved forest, with like few houses there. On the east side of it, there is John Home &amp; Sons, which is like a septic company, and that land is actually in your map marked as contaminated land. Okay? And, and the roads that lead to this, they are, I think we spoke about that already. There's single-lane road, no traffic light, nothing. I mean, there's some major expansion would be required for, you know, 10s or 20s or 30s of school buses to be coming in there, right? So, you know, it's a small parcel of land. I, I think it's, I don't see if in the future, there is a need for expansion. How or where are you going to expand? I mean, I think it's blocked from all sides. It's already very cramped to put two buildings in there, and if we have to expand, there is no space for expansion. So, I, I'm just trying to understand like what other areas that you looked at and how you figured out that this is the right place to, you know, go for a school. This land, in fact, is, was supposed to be open, preserved land, is from what I hear, but I guess they changed their mind on that. So, yeah, that, that's my question.
Well, let me just say, one of the reasons why we have the engineering report is to find out about the buildability on, on the land. And as far as the size, the people, the experts we've been talking to, at least informally, have assured us that 65 acres is more than enough to accommodate two schools. And, again, the engineers will be looking at, at that property to see if there are any problems, because that's what we need. We need that report.
Yeah. I mean, the, the fact that we cannot expand Applegarth or Oak Tree or any of the other schools that are out there says that the planning was not right. So, we have to, you know, that's, so, you know, 65 acres is 65 acres. It's not, the, the engineers going there are not going to make it 120 acres, right? It's still 65 acres. So, how are you going to expand? I mean, let's say five years down the line, we realize that these other builders they were talking about, they put another 5,000 houses, right? How are you going to expand? Where?
Well, this, the state only allows us, you know, to go out maybe five years. We're looking at 10. Also, let me just say to you that we did have a Student Growth Advisory Committee. We did have members, we had an ad-hoc committee before that, and we had about 100 members from the community that all participated in, in this process. So, it's not an unknown factor. It's been out there, it was on Channel 20, televised all the meetings, on Channel, were televised on Channel 28 as well. So, you know, it's, it's not a secret. This was not done in a back room. It was very open and transparent, and that was one of our goals, is to make it open and transparent to everyone.
So, is it transparent which other lands you considered, or that's not transparent?
There's just so much land that, that's, you know, available, that, that could accommodate the needs of the school system. There's not as much available land as, as you think out there. This, this is
Not for us.
Yeah.
Okay. If I have to raise these issues in, in terms of just using that land, I mean, of course, this is not the zoning board. When is that hearing going to happen? Just, just so that we know, and we can come back again and talk about that.
I don't know when the zoning I don't know when the zoning board or will be looking at this. First of all, we have to see the feasibility of the land itself with the engineering report and have to get our specialists in there, and that's one of the purposes of this resolution, to move ahead with the planning process. And that's all we're doing right now. We're in the planning process. Nobody's building anything yet.
Okay, thank you.
And all that information, as Mr. Gorsky just reminded me, of course, will be shared with the public when it comes out. Thank you, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else from the public? Yes.
Thank you. Michael Camlet, Seven Constitution Drive, Stonebridge Community. Two years from now, are we going to have the two schools built already?
I don't think so.
Okay, so that's what I'm asking basically, how far into the future are we looking to get the schools built? Because I know you do have a student population increasing rapidly.
In general terms, subject to change. It takes a year to get the approvals, and everything, once the board authorizes the plan, go to Department of Education and then get on the ballot. So it'll take a year from the time the board decides upon this plan to go on the ballot. And then it will take at least another two to three years for the bidding and then the construction of the school. So the very earliest you're looking at a school building, again, I emphasize the very earliest, is September of 2020.
Okay, so the light on Perrineville may get here before the schools are built.
We believe so, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, come on up.
I am Ramranath from Six Owens Drive, South Phile Estates, again, very close to this land that you're considering. Couple of things, I looked at at the last meeting, the kind of the recommendation from that student growth advisory committee. I don't see this option kind of being kind of one of them. I know they didn't talk about the particular spots, but they'd come up with those different combination choices. I don't recall this specific one being one of them, maybe I'm mistaken. The second thing is that that area is already going through a lot of growth, as my neighbor indicated. There are two new developments, the Hidden Ponds, as well as the Coles Neck, Coles Run. And I think there are two phases of that, one here, one back. Also, there is a commercial property called the Gables on Applegate, probably less than a mile, I guess, from, again, this location. And keep in mind, all the new houses are coming on Applegate. This road also touches Applegate. So I'm really concerned on the traffic and all those situations that are going to be created. So I would like to make sure people take that into consideration. And so part of that Edward study, my question is, is a traffic study also going to be done? Or is that a separate thing that also needs to be funded and proceeded on?
Sir, to your first point about the Strategic Growth Advisory Committee, that was a six-month process, as Mr. Ryback said, there was over 100 volunteers at various times of that engagement that studied and brainstormed a bunch of different options. There was numerous table games where everybody's idea was documented and thought out and developed. Nobody's idea was ever disregarded in any way, and everything was advanced from there. And then the best ideas from the group were put forward and reviewed by the committee, there was three. And the committee concluded by offering those ideas to administration. But ultimately, it's an administrative responsibility to use that community process to make a recommendation to the board in order to satisfy the number of on-house students and develop the facilities accordingly. So that, although it was not exactly one of those three ideas, I will say, in all honesty, as this process has gone along that way, that it has been a very evolutionary process, and parts of those three ideas have been incorporated into this ultimate plan that's before you.
Thank you. And about the traffic study?
Traffic study will have to be performed, absolutely.
Okay. And then the last point I wanted to make, as you mentioned about Applegate being modified to hold administrative offices and save that $70,000 in expense. One thing is, I don't know, I'm sure people will be raising this, Applegate obviously has some historical significance as a school. People would want it to remain as a school. So that is, I think, something I'll just ask people to consider, you know, can it be refurbished and improved and expanded upon? And then second, I guess the Senior Citizens Center, I live right opposite it, I don't think it is heavily used. There is some space probably there to put in some of the administrative offices. So why take up the entire Applegate school for that purpose? So we have a land there, maybe we can, we just have to build one school instead of two. So I would propose or request that be considered.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Lang?
Hi, Patty Lang, 74 McFarland Circle. I just have a couple of questions. During your presentation, you said that the study was an environmental engineer, but it's not, right? Like there, this first thing that you're voting on tonight isn't, wasn't an environmental engineer. It's just that during the presentation, it was quote, so I just wanted to clarify.
I misspoke.
That's okay, that's okay. Number two, if the land is being gifted by the township, shouldn't the township have already found out whether or not it can be built upon? Is a gift that's going to cost us $13,000 before we even know if we can use it truly a gift? We desperately need this school, we need the school. I think the plan's a good plan. My concern is, we're going to spend $13,000, which we don't have $13,000 in our back pockets, to find out whether or not the land is even buildable. And that doesn't include the study as to whether it's environmentally safe to put the children on the land. So I just, I'm a little confused, like how are they gifting us this land and costing us this money? I know you can't really answer that, but...
Yeah, I'm going to let Mr. Gorsky answer that.
Evening, Mrs. Lang. First, the transfer of the land from the township occurred before the township had any understanding of how the school district was going to use the property. Perhaps if they had that foresight and crystal ball ahead of time, and they'd known that this six-month ad hoc process would have led us in this direction to need two schools on that parcel, that some of those engagements could have been done, but they weren't. And unfortunately, administration will say, and we've said this all along, we are, our time is not on our side here in this process. There's been a couple problems so far stemming from the superintendency being vacant. Fortunately, now we have security in that position, and we've had some great contributions from Dr. Kozak in this plan, and we're proceeding accordingly. These expenses, $13,000 for an engineering study, traffic study, bond counselor, architect, they are in the budget right now. They were deliberated when the budget was put together. I believe we have over $100,000 in an account reserving those funds. And they are a miniscule expense, in my opinion, to the total cost of this project. Interest rates, as you know, are at a historic low. We have over 1,000 on-house students now. And pretty soon, if this plan does not go in accordance to the timeline we have set up, we're going to be looking at some pretty drastic consequences. And I don't want to get into those to, you know, take the thunder out of the night.
Do we have ownership of that land at this point, or are we still waiting for the...
We do not. What I've asked the township for today, and I'm working on that with our board attorney, is to get a letter of intent.
Okay.
This, as Mr. Nosteen recommended at the Finance Committee, will give a strong basis for the district to engage in those type of expenses to develop the land and research the land and all the other aspects of this project. So that letter of intent will show the ownership and the timeline of transfer of that land to where it is ultimately deeded and accepted publicly by resolution by the Board of Education.
And my final question is, in the agreement with the engineer, it says, "We estimate the phase of work shall be completed within six months." Is there any way for you guys to get them to do it sooner? Because six months is a long time for us to wait to find out whether or not we can use the land. So can you change the agreement to make it three months?
I just want to, you know, I was smiling because that's been the question at the Finance Committee and all of us, and the key word is really "within," and we want to do things as expeditiously as possible. The engineering company is aware of that, and I think it will, from the feedback we've been getting, that will happen in less than six months.
Good, thank you very much.
Anybody else from the public?
Good evening. Andy Pelori, 16 St. James Street.
Hi.
How are you? As Mr. Klein indicated, I'm part of the planning board, and I know the statistics a little better, but I think the numbers that he presented to the board today are pretty much on target. The only difference is that some of this affordable housing, as well as the associated residential development, is not going to take place in the next five to 10 years, but it's going to take place 15 to 20 years from now, in terms of realizing their full potential or the maximum growth. The couple of questions that I have is, there's a discussion that's going on, I'm a little confused, I'm an engineer, so be warned, that there's a $13,000, there's an environmental study, there's a traffic study, there's a feasibility study. What was done so far? What's going to get done soon? And what is the $13,000 about? Because $13,000 for a Phase 1 study is quite a bit of money, and it does not take six months to do it, I can tell you that. My firm will be more than happy to assist you with it. So we need to get down to this a little faster, quicker. Absolutely, the need is there, and I think it's going to continue to be projected to be a tremendous need in the township that we need to meet. One suggestion to the board is that the documents that you actually put out there today, I don't think everybody got it. Probably one tree from Monroe was killed to put this together. A lot of people who come here don't really understand some of the jargon that's used here, and I'm very familiar with it. It may be a lot easier to get your points and our points across to the general public by creating a summary sheet that you can put them and hand them over, rather than giving a large material for them to go through. It's always easy to put stuff on the website and say that the information is available, we'll make it available, but it should be available to general public in such a way that they can comprehend it quickly and be able to make a decision. I request that, for example, how many, by five-year periods or two-year period, what the population growth in enrollment is going to be, and what is the current enrollment, and at what point do we need a new school? That should be clearly laid out so that it's easy for us to review. So that's just a suggestion to the board to see if you can simplify the information that you have so that people can comprehend faster. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Seeing the one from the public, we could vote on the resolution. Mr. Gorsky, you have a roll call vote?
I have one question.
Oh, I didn't see your hand. Got to raise your hand.
Okay. Has anybody from the Student Growth Advisory Committee seen this land?
Well, I've seen, I think Ms. Lapoy has seen it, too.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
The Student Growth Advisory Committee was handed maps and some schematics and a lot of geographic information about the land. It was studied and deliberated at that committee level to a large extent, because it's a big condition of this project. And members of the committee have actually, as members of the board have, seen the property physically.
Okay. I haven't, I mean, I wasn't part of the committee, and I wasn't here when it started, so...
Thank you, Mr. Ryback. Just to clarify on the availability of information, it's been said several times, but all of the minutes from the Student Growth Advisory Committee meetings are online. We videotaped every single meeting and broadcast it over Channel 28, streamed it, and it is available online. We have information, is, you know, is, we try to make it, we try to make the entire process as transparent as possible, involve people in decisions, make sure that information was available. And as the board is well aware, I'm very much a proponent of doing many, many things online. Having said that, there are still a number of people that are more comfortable with paper copies. So as much as I am reluctant to make paper copies, we still have a concern, we've had comments about that material is still made available in a, you know, hard copy. But if anybody wants to go to our website, we try to make it as easily accessible as possible and visible. All that information is there.
Very quickly, and the demographic study is still on the website, is that correct? And it's in pretty...
Should be.
...good detail...
Yeah.
...about projections and when schools will be needed. So that's already been exposed to the public for a long time now. So just have to get on there and take a look.
Especially coming from somebody who is always trumpeting or, you know, saying that we need to be transparent, so thank you, Mr. Arminio.
And I think we've had many, we've had many board meetings with the demographer there. We've had discussions about, ad infinitum, really, about the numbers and the accuracy of the numbers. So the board has done a great deal, and the administration especially, has done a great deal to make those numbers accurate and understandable to the public. So that, the latest demographic study is available.
Thank you. I'd like the board to vote on this, Mr. Gorsky.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Nosteen?
Yes.
Mrs. Carino?
Yes.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
And Mr. Rutske is permitted to vote on this?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Board President, I'm very pleased to say that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. It's nice to hear, and we can now stop moving forward. Okay, yes. Absolutely. Dr. Kozak?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one clarification was brought to my attention on the agenda I would like to bring to the board's attention and the members of the public. Under letter N, there is a motion to, it is recommended that the board approve the following curriculum for the 2016-17 school year. I would respectfully ask that you change the word curriculum to programs, since some of the items are not...
What page is that on?
Oh, 24. Letter N.
That's not on 24. I have numbers on 24.
I have numbers, too.
Page 22, at the top.
22.
N.
Thank you, that was the revised...
Program.
Board approved, fine. I want some recommendations. To, from the word curriculum, please cross out and substitute programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I believe the superintendent really has given his report already in detail, so we can move to personnel, which is on page 6. I need a motion to approve under Personnel, items A through double O.
So moved?
We'll have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
A question.
Ms. Arminio?
Page 9, CC. It's recommended to approve the following certified personnel to do professional development. Is it to teach professional development or to participate in the training of professional development? Dr. Ralph?
Yes, absolutely. This is to be trainers in our district. They have been trained as trainers already, but because it is a paid position, because they do get paid for the planning for training, it has to be board-approved, that they're board-approved trainers.
Okay, so this is all in-house training that we do, instead of sending people out?
Yes.
And they've all been trained? So they, they're not trained necessarily in the same thing, they're all trainers for different aspects of professional development?
Correct. We have about 17-year-long courses each year, and they are trained, each one would take one of those courses and teach those courses. They also are trained to do mini-courses throughout the year for our on-demand professional development. So it does save the district money because they're training our staff instead of our staff going out.
Right. And are they, are they all different hourly rates, depending on the individual, or is there one hourly rate for the training?
It's based, they do not get paid for the time...
Any other question, comment? And we can have a roll call vote?
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Mrs. Carino?
Yes.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
And Mr. Rutske is permitted to vote on this?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Board President, I'm very pleased to say that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. It's nice to hear, and we can now start moving forward. Okay, yes. Absolutely. Dr. Kozak?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one clarification was brought to my attention on the agenda, I would like to bring to the board's attention and the members of the public. Under letter "N," there is a motion to, it is recommended that the board approve the following curriculum for the 2016-17 school year. I would respectfully ask that you change the word "curriculum" to "programs," since some of the items are not-
What page is that on?
Oh, 24. Sorry.
You want to?
Under which?
Letter "N."
That's not on 24. I have numbers on 24.
I have numbers, too.
Page 22, at the top.
22.
"N."
Thank you, that was the revised.
"Programs."
Board approved the following, I want some recommendations. To, from the word "curriculum," please cross out and substitute "programs." Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I believe the superintendent really has given his report already in detail, so we can move to Personnel, which is on page 6. I need a motion to approve under Personnel, Items A through double O.
So moved.
We'll have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
A question?
Ms.
Arminio? Page 9, CC. It's recommended to approve the following certified personnel to do professional development. Is it to teach professional development, or to participate in the training of professional development? Dr. Rouse?
Yes, absolutely. This is to be trainers in our district. They have been trained as trainers already, but because it is a paid position, because they do get paid for the planning for training, it has to be board-approved, that they're board-approved trainers.
Okay, so this is all in-house training that we do, instead of sending people out?
Yes.
And they've all been trained?
So they, they're not trained necessarily in the same thing, they're all trainers for
different aspects of professional development?
Correct. We have about 17-year-long courses each year, and they are trained, each one would take one of those courses and teach those courses. They also are trained to do mini-courses throughout the year for our on-demand professional development. So it does save the district money, because they're training our staff, instead of our staff going out.
Right. And are they, are they all different hourly rates, depending on the individual, or is there one hourly rate for the training?
It's based, they do not get paid for the time that they're already being paid for their school day.
Okay.
What they get paid is a preparation time, and that's an agreement with the union. They get so many hours for a full-day training, and it's also a different amount, depending on whether they've done the training before.
Okay.
They get less if they've done the training before, because it's not, it would just be in editing, instead of creating a new course.
Thank you. And I might have another one before OO. And I do not, thank you.
Any other question, comment? And we can have a roll call vote?
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Mrs. Carino?
Yes.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
And Mr. Rutske is permitted to vote on this?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Board President, the motion passes.
Okay. Mr. Gorsky, we're up to the business administrator's report. Before I do the board action, is there any report you'd like to give or comment?
Yes. Mr. Ryback, members of the Board of Education, I did want to go into the Edwards Engineering contract, which is on my consent roll call, and ask again if there was any questions after I give you a little introduction to the process. Edwards Engineering was recommended through the Building Grounds Transportation Committee initially, after the expression by administration that we need an engineer at this juncture. And it was recommended to have an independent professional that reports to this Board of Education. And as such, Edwards Engineering was recommended mainly through the contribution of our Facilities Director. Edwards Engineering has performed admirably on the Oak Tree Construction Project, last year's middle-school driveway and drainage project, and also some trailer projects in previous years. And that is a key and integral part of getting started with this plan that administration has put forth, to determine the feasibility and suitability of the land, if it suits our purposes or not. Otherwise, a lot of time could be wasted, and more money could be spent than this, if we proceed without having this nailed down. As was discussed, it says up to six months in the contract, Mr. Teague called the professionals from Edwards today, and we expect that to come sooner. However, there are some unknowns, because that's why they're engaged. If, for example, something is determined to be requiring additional study of an environmental nature, or whatever it could be, it could take up to that longer period of time, but we don't expect that or anticipate that. And $13,000 fee was also aggressively negotiated by Mr. Teague. I certainly appreciate the way he engages in the negotiations with these professionals. Every single one, he points out that these are budgeted monies that would be better consumed in the classrooms, and he worked them over pretty good.
That's it?
Yes, sir. So, members of the Board of Education, Mr. Board President, it is recommended that board action items A through U be approved by consent roll call.
Moved.
Second.
I have some comments and some questions about the proposal for the engineering. First of all, the, in general, one of the tasks, just to, I think the public should be made aware of, that they'll coordinate with Monroe Township Toll Brothers on the procurement of available survey and site plan mapping, that have already developed in conjunction with the adjacent residential housing developments. And we discussed this in Buildings and Grounds and Transportation, that they do, or some, you know, do open public records and get all of this. So that can help us determine a future need for other things. Not that we should rely on it, because, you know, we should do our own due diligence, in my opinion, but it is a good first step to see what has actually been done. And if there is an impact study done, or a gentleman mentioned about wetlands, a wetlands letter from the state should be in that also. So if we see, like, preliminary information based on what the public records say, that would be, I think, helpful. So I think that's a good idea. I do have an objection, as I have, on the general conditions where they talk about the land developer that is donating the property. My objection to the word "donating" is that it is not a donation. The Toll Brothers is receiving valuable, very valuable consideration for providing that land to the township in a, based on their approvals for their development. So I would ask them to use a "transfer" word, or change the wording, because it does not really explain what's happening. And I think the last question is, there's some confusion that I have about them talking about the owner of the property. So, when we do this particular proposal, the owner of the property, it says monthly, and payment for services rendered, monthly invoices will be submitted to the owner, based upon percentage of proposal work completed by that date. Are we considered the owner of the proposal? Is that what it is?
Yes, ma'am. That's boilerplate language. Owner refers to the Board of Education, although we do not technically have ownership of the land yet.
Okay. All right. I think that's the only questions I have of that, but I do have some other questions of the other actions. May I?
And Mrs. Arminio, I will, I will go through the contract and supplant any word "donation" with "transfer" before it's executed.
Okay. Can I ask on some other items? Okay. On number seven, page 24, it's recommended that we approve someone from Nebraska for drill design. Is that going to be done over the Internet, or are we paying for expenses to bring him to New Jersey? It's, I'm sorry. Marching Band Drill Design for a fee of $3,000?
Number seven on page 24?
Yes. The person is from Omaha, Nebraska, so I just wanted to know if we, if they were, was this an Internet design? We're not going to be paying for travel expenses or anything, right?
Do you see it? Oh. No, yeah, can I answer? Okay.
Sorry, I didn't get you, I didn't tell you that in advance.
Yeah, that, no, that's fine. That's fine. To my understanding, that is a drill design. They're not going to actually come here, but you pay the March, you know, consultant, whatever, to design it, choreograph it.
Oh, I see.
Yes.
Okay, and that could be done without having a first-class ticket to Monroe, which would be a wonderful thing, but, okay. And then, I just want to make one more statement. Oh, in 27, the trade-in of property, and I know, last time I saw this on the agenda, I was confused. This is property, not real property, is that correct, Mr. Gorsky? The sale of property, we recommend that the Board of Education acknowledge the certified purchasing agent?
Yes, ma'am. That's a blanket authorization. For example, when we lease purchase the buses, we have some that have gone past their useful life of 15 years, and the state will not allow us to use them anymore. So this authorizes me to perhaps trade them in to the person that we're buying the buses from through the bid, and/or auction them off, if that's, if we can get a better price worth there.
I have no objection to that, but I'm saying, could we put in parentheses "not real property," like, not land? I always think that, maybe my, from my background, I'm thinking the sale of property, we're talking about land, but we don't really, that's not what this means. This means just-
No. Real property could only be traded in, transferred, let go by resolution of the board, no doubt about it.
Okay.
There was a sale of land that happened probably about eight years ago. There was a building lot that was owned by the board that was sold, and that was all done through committee and then board resolution.
With a different, a totally-
Yeah, I just can't go unloading property.
Okay. No, it's just that it was, you know, I was just hoping that we can clarify that. And then, I just want to just make a point, that a real donation on page 25C, in that we accept the donation from the Barclaybrook PTA at the value of $6,995, that's a donation, and I thank them for that.
Yes. And a lot of hard work on their behalf.
That's correct.
Mr. Nostine?
Thank you, Mr. Board President. I just had a question, and one of the gentlemen, I guess you already left, kind of made me think of it. Has anybody looked at what the Toll Brothers, when they were forced by the cluster ordinance to deed this property to the township? Do we know how the township accepted this property? Was it for municipal use, or was it for open space? Because the gentleman made an issue that it was open space, and we all know the issues with trying to get open space reclassified.
Mr. Ryback, I don't believe, Mr. Nostine, that the property has been transferred to the township yet. We could certainly get you that information, or it may be delineated in that letter of intent I talked about before.
Yeah, that would be a key thing to get, obviously, because that does change the whole dynamic of this project, if that's the case. Also, I believe Ms. Lang mentioned that this is a gift. It's not really a gift. It's, a gift is something that you do out of the goodness of your heart. This is something that the township is, was given this property, because they, the Toll Brothers had to give this property to the township, because the penalties of the township for the Toll Brothers giving this property to the township, and eventually to the school board, was that they've gotten many more houses built with much higher density, therefore more students. So it really hurts me, and it really bothers me, when I hear people saying that this is a gift, or that they're giving this to the township, or that the builder gave it to the, to the school. None of that is true. This was a law that's on the books, based on cluster development, and that is one of the main reasons why we're in the situation that we are. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Nostine. Anybody else?
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Nostine?
Yes.
Mrs. Carino?
Yes.
Mr. Ryback?
I vote yes on everything except Item 4, where I have to recuse myself.
So noted. Thank you. Mr. Russo?
Yes.
And Mr. Rutske?
You ready for this, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I abstain, with the exceptions of Items A1 through A11, M, O, R, S, and T.
Thank you, that wasn't so bad. Thank you, sir. Mr. Board President, motion passes. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Ready for Board President's report? Very briefly, I too, Ms. Arminio, beat me to it a little bit. I'd like to thank the Barclaybrook Brookside PTA for their donation and contribution of time, because they're all volunteers, and certainly for almost $7,000 of basketball hoops, parts, and installation and padding. One other item, on July 18th, Dr. Kozak and I went to the Oak Tree School, and we visited the Extended School Year Program, which is basically for identified special needs students. And we got to really interact with the students going into the classroom, and it was wonderful possible avenue to a free and prosperous future in order to raise a family and buy a home and live comfortable like you do. You strive to prepare them to do better like you did. You are teaching your children the American way. Not on my point. Many graduates of this school system, past and present, will be eligible to vote in the upcoming presidential election. As you know, in recent months, a majority of our young college students have supported socialism. Why are our children supporting socialism? Why? Have we been teaching them and giving them the information they need to make intelligent choices for their future? Are we teaching them the opportunities they have, as you would teach your own children? It seems certain that we are not. They really don't have any idea how lucky they are to live in America instead of somewhere else. Once in college, these young minds are unprepared to know the difference between fact, rhetoric, radical opinion, and propaganda. This has been happening for years and is grinding down America. We see what is happening to our nation, but we don't do anything. We are lucky enough to live in America and having the right to vote for any party we choose, but many students are coming out of our school system without any of the vital statistics, vital civics education necessary for them to make a decision as active voters. Because we give our pledge of allegiance to our flag and country, it should be a priority to teach our children what it truly means to be American, to teach them patriotism and pride and love of their country, not to impose our will, but to teach them the difference between what they think, what they want, what they have, and what they can achieve. Attaching these teachings to the social studies curriculum in the four years of high school would help instill the seeds of freedom now and give them a chance to make intelligent decisions for their future. If we don't teach our children, we will lose everything our forefathers died for, and the foundation of our great nation will be replaced in future elections. You know, a president once said, "Freedom is never more than one generation from extinction." We didn't pass it to our children in the bloodstream. It must be fought for, protected, and handed on to them to do the same.
Mr. Presioso, I have to ask you to wrap up your, beyond your three minutes.
I asked the board if they would consider and discuss the issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Want to comment?
Good evening, Mr. Presioso. I share your thoughts on this country being a great country. I certainly appreciate the fact that I was raised in this country and that I'm able to raise my children in this country, and I certainly appreciate what our children in this school district and the entire community has as a result of the efforts of those who have come before us, as well as those who are currently in office, regardless of what political party or affiliation they are with. But I do have to question you on a statement that you're making as fact. Without, you know that I'm a data guy, so it's not going to be a surprise. I would respectfully disagree with your statement that we, being the Monroe Township School District, are not educating our children properly, and without hard data to show me that our students, upon having left the school district, do not have those values, I would respectfully disagree and say, you may have, you should have been or you've been to many of our events where we honor our veterans, where we respect our country. There are civics education that's instilled in our curricula throughout, from kindergarten through 12th grade. And I would say that we do teach our students to be critical thinkers and to be thoughtful in the process. And I believe from everything, from our Armed Forces Day, which I don't think you were at, but certainly many of our veterans and community members were at and seem to be very appreciative of that, to even the days when we bring our police force in, that the values that you espouse are certainly values that we teach our children. So I do respect your opinion, and I understand maybe your concern, but I would say that we take that task of educating our students very seriously, and I believe we do accomplish that task. We have civics integrated throughout our social studies curriculum, throughout the entire curriculum, and yes, it is taught. It may not be called civics, because there's many different areas to be taught, but yes, civics is taught.
What I'd like to do, because I don't know if we have the time to, you know, pursue all this at this meeting, I'd like to turn this over to the Curriculum Committee, Dr. Alvik and Mr. Kaufman, and they can discuss it there and get more information for you. Okay. Anybody from the board want to comment?
There's more people.
Yes. I thought I saw a hand up.
Good evening, folks. Richard Gibbons, 415 Schoolhouse Road. In regards to what the superintendent said and what Mr. Presioso said, one way to clear that up would be to give the, possibly the senior class a civics test, and if all of this curriculum is incorporated, give them a civics test before they leave school, see what they know. I'd be willing to bet that most of the kids probably don't know. For instance, one example would be the First Amendment. What freedoms do we have under the First Amendment? I'd be willing to bet that probably 80 or 90% of the kids wouldn't be able to answer that. So I think that would be one recommendation, to give them a civics test and see what they actually know. Thank you very much.
Well, that's one reason why I wanted to turn it over to the Curriculum Committee, so they can discuss it there. I think, I just want to add one comment. I think that, you know, this, as you're perceiving it, I think most districts, most school systems throughout the country teach civics and American history. The question is, I think what we're up against is a media problem, because there's no way we can compete with what the kids see on TV and, you know, and magazines, et cetera, and on their computers. So that's, I think, part of the problem. It's just a comment I wanted to make. It's hard to compete against that media. It's hard to go up against the celebrities. That seems to be a little bit more attractive, unfortunately, than, you know, civics, but that's what we're up against, and we have to keep pursuing this, and I'm sure that school systems throughout the country do. All right, thank you. Anyone else from the public? Mr. Klein.
Mark Klein, 7 Crenshaw. I have something else to say, but in this case, it's this generation never served, or many of them, the bulk of them, never served in the armed forces. They never served in war. They never fought for this country or represented this country. And I'm not saying, you know, maybe it was misunderstood, but we're not, well, they're not complaining about what's taught in our schools. What I see is, throughout the country, they're being inundated with, I'm going to call it propaganda. But anyway, what I came here for is, those of you who heard or read about Christie's plan for more money, equalization of state funds, he basically came up with a plan that I mentioned eight years ago, and that was that every student's worth the same, no matter where they lived. If you went on the site, you were able to put in your township, under his plan, at $6,500 a student, we would receive $46 million, not the $3 or $4 million, $46 million, which we said years ago was our fair share. Okay? He did bring up in his report, in North New Jersey, the charter schools were graduating upwards of 89% of their students, whereas it was reported that their regular public schools were graduating about 45%. Their public schools are spending $30,000 a year per student to educate them. These charter schools were $13,000 to $17,000, and that are in line with what we spend. So you figure something like this. We know that the formula is wrong. We know that giving more money to the 31 districts is a fallacy. It doesn't promote better education. This is the ideal opportunity to have bipartisan support in Trenton. But what you have is, you have the Democrats refuse to support it. They want it to go the way it is. They're worried about cutting money from the inner city where the money is wasted. Newark, New Jersey, my friend was a teacher after he retired out of New York. They, this elementary school, they had storerooms full of brand-new books, never used, storerooms full of brand-new computers, never used, because they're cutting deals with their suppliers, so there's kickbacks. There's theft, as we found out with Camden when they got audited. Okay? I have sent letters lately after this for support of his plan. The letters went to, and bear with me, please, the letters went to Chris Christie to compliment him on finally doing the right thing. Chief Justice Rabner...
Could you wrap it up?
Oh, give me a break.
I am.
Come on, I'm bleeding. Give me a break so I can get home.
I'll give you a few seconds more. That's it.
No, I need more. Well, I'm almost finished. Chief Justice Rabner, State Supreme Court, they have found in the Abbott decisions, there were 20 decisions, of which the Newark Education Law Center won roughly, of those 20, 17 of them. They never rolled back Christie's cuts for them, but they did, they cut for them, they reversed for them, didn't do for us or any other districts.
Mr. Klein, I'll give you, you've had, listen, you've had your time. If there's any, let me ask you, is there anyone else in the public wanting to speak?
All I want to do is, it's a couple of more minutes. I'm not complaining. I'm trying to give you pertinent information.
I understand, I understand that.
I can sit down, and I can come back after they finish speaking.
Mr. Klein, we may have to do that?
I'll do it. You have to speak. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. So now you had Sweeney. You spoke about that Senator Sweeney, or I should say Senate President Sweeney, was going to cut a deal to give us more money. I spoke to Sweeney at the mayor's breakfast. He knew who I was, and he says, "Don't worry. If my program goes through, you'll get $2 million more." $2 million doesn't cover our increase from one year to the next. I said, "Well, what he was going to do is, there was a district, a school district in his district that was getting 145% of their budget from the state. Another district was getting 65%." And he says, "Well, that's unfair." I said, "I agree with you. What about if you're only getting 3%?" I said, "Why can't you go after the 31 districts that the money's being wasted? Oh, we can't touch anything that the Supreme Court judge, you know, came out in the decision." Well, baloney. How many more hundreds of billions of dollars is this state going to waste? And that's exactly what they're doing at our expense. Now, what I am going to do now, now those letters went out, and those of you that I am, I'm finished now, that have their email, I have your email address, I've sent you the letters, I will now send them to you, Doctor.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
Lastly, no, lastly, last thing.
Mr. Klein.
I am now going to find out how much the Newark Education Law Center receives in fees for every time they win, and you got to be talking hundreds of millions of dollars.
All right. You've gone way beyond your limit, and I'd say I have to end this.
You wasted time.
I didn't say, I didn't say it wasn't valuable. I said you went beyond, beyond your limit. Okay. Anyone else from the public? I don't know if they're getting up or leaving. Yes, okay.
Just a quick, wait, I have to say my name.
Your name, your address, this, you have...
All right. Giuseppe Bon Jovi, 49 Jagelski Road. Just a quick question. For the new schools that you guys plan on building on the Moonland, what is the expected way to fund the construction? Is it through taxes increase, or is it just through getting like municipal bonds?
Well, we would have to do, we would have to do a bond referendum, which is, the public will be voting to approve of bonds to secure the money for those.
Okay. Might I propose that when that referendum is set, to allow the township, the residents in the township first option to buy those, so that the money that's being spent stays in the, has an opportunity to stay in the community, instead of being sent out to, let's say, the banks and other international investors that buy these bonds?
As Mr. Ryback said, the financing source will be tax-free municipal bonds sold by the district, and there will also be a component of state aid through debt service relief that will help reimburse the district for principal and interest, subject to annual appropriation by the state. As far as the bond sale itself, to maximize, or in this case minimize, the interest exposure to the district, the bonds are sold through public bidding, public auction, and those auction houses bidding on the bonds with the lowest interest rate, which would, in essence, keep down the borrowing cost to the Monroe community, are the ones awarded the bid. So it would not be a fair and open process to make it subject to Monroe residents first, although I appreciate the creativeness of the idea.
I just say, because you don't, it would rather keep the money in the community, so that it could be spent on local businesses instead of outside. And I guess to the die, I'm a graduate of Monroe Township High School five years ago, and the First Amendment is freedom of speech.
Anybody else from the public? Are you just saying hello there?
No, this is only one sentence that you wouldn't let me finish. All of those letters, copies were sent to State Senator Linda Greenstein, State Assemblyman Wayne DeAngelo, and State Assemblyman Dan Benson. I hope they are watching this. They can no longer give us an excuse that it's the other party or it's somebody else. This has to change now. You cannot, the state cannot expect township residents in Monroe Township to pay for schools that they badly need. When you go into New Brunswick, they built a high school for $187 million, we're around $123 million. We came in under budget, they were over budget, all paid for by the state. They had two new elementary schools, totally paid for by the state, and we can't get nothing from the state. Thank you very much, and I leave my two minutes to somebody else.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Not seeing anyone from the public. We can go to the closed session resolution. Before we do, however, because we're going to be talking about Superintendent Merrick's administration could not participate in that, so it's recommended that the Board of Education appoint Tom Naustine as temporary Board Secretary for the remainder of this meeting, in accordance with NJSA 18A:16-1.1.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed?
No.
Okay. That passes. And now, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subjects: harassment, intimidation, and bullying. We will not be doing Donaldson appearance today, and we will be discussing attorney advice discussion regarding Superintendent Merrick's pursuant to the employment agreement between the superintendent and the board. Following closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such times the need for confidentiality no longer exists. So moved. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We'll be going to closed session. We would take approximately, I'm saying approximately, an hour. Okay, well, let's get back. We're still in session. I'd like a motion to approve the following. It is recommended that the Board of Education, one, approve the previously submitted merit goals for the superintendent of schools for the 2016-17 school year, subject to approval by the Executive County Superintendent of Schools, and, two, direct the superintendent to submit the merit goals to the Executive County Superintendent for review and approval. So moved.
Second. I'm sorry.
Paul, you go ahead.
No, no, you go, Paul.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's taking up too much time.
Unanimous? Unanimous on that? Okay. I see no one from the public, so we can...
Wait, 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 hold on a second. I think you have to do a roll call.
Roll?
Yes.
Oh, we just, unanimous? Roll call, okay.
Sorry, Board Secretary. Sorry.
I thought, I thought we only had to do the...
No.
Steve, I hear so many from the public, Mark Klein wants to talk.
Thank you, Mr. Kauf. Okay, all those, we're going to be voting on the reso. Michelle Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Jill DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman? Ms. Dawn? Steve Ryback?
Yes.
Frank Russo?
Accused.
Okay. Mr. Board President?
No, Paul.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I go next.
I'm sorry. Paul. Mr. Paul Retsky?
Yes.
Mr. Board Secretary? Mr. Board President, the motion...
Did you get his vote?
Yes.
Yes. The motion has passed with four voting yes and two recusals, based on the majority of a quorum being four.
No, five. Should be five.
Five yeses.
Oh, boy. Mike's got a tough job.
We give you this job once.
Yes, you voted, right, Mr.?
Yes, I did not count my own vote. Exactly.
So the motion passes?
Yes, thank you.
Good, okay. Next scheduled Board of Education meeting is Wednesday, August 31st, 7 o'clock PM, right here in the high school. I'd like to...
Mr. Ryback, could you see if there's anyone in the public? You have to announce in public forum.
I did.
Oh, did you?
I did.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's, that's okay. We're all a little tired.
Apologize.
That's right, you're in time.